Hey, everyone. We'll call to order the work session of October 5th, 2023 for the Glen County Board of Education. Dr. Spence, I'll turn it over to you for items of information.
All right, thank you. Our computer is froze, but we will start with financial update from Ms. Cody.
Okay, so the first thing is the beginning balance has been adjusted to reflect the operating transfers that we made at the end of last fiscal year. We moved 10 million to capital projects and then five million to the workers' comp fund. Since we're no longer self-insured, the premium is 1.2 million a year, and then we're still paying the old claims prior to July 1st of this year. So we moved enough to cover that for the year. We had one budget amendment. It was to eliminate the computer science capacity grant, which was a grant we received in 2023, but we did not get again this year. So our revenues came in at 7.5% of budget, which is kind of typical for this time of year. We haven't started to receive our property tax revenues yet, and then our federal grant budgets were due on October 1st, so we're not allowed to draw down any of our federal grant funds until all those budgets are approved. So in October and November, I would expect for that percentage to be more in line with the budget position. Expenditures were 11.5%, and then July sales tax collections received in August were just under 3.3 million. We also received an adjustment in August, $421,500. That was for a coding error with the Department of Revenue, which affected our revenues received from September 22 to July 2023, but we did accrue that amount into fiscal year '23, so that will be reflected in those revenues. I should have gone down, sorry. So are there any questions on the budget?
I don't have, I didn't really see any other way, any other spot to ask it, but it's kind of a future agenda item, if you don't mind, but we haven't done it since probably before COVID, but by the next work session, can we look at cost per pupil again like we used to do? Andrea had a spreadsheet, we looked at it, last 10 years maybe, I mean, I would get a good, to get a good track of it, and then maybe pick, I mean, who would we normally compare ourselves to, you know, size-wise, budget-wise? I know we sometimes throw Camden out, Camden out because they've got the social security thing, they don't pay and all that kind of stuff.
Clark County's closest.
They get other federal grants and stuff, but pick four or five that we, you know, in our research, something we compare ourselves to, that we can look at their cost per pupil. Not the last 10 years, that's going to be hard to get everybody, it's going to look at their current, so we can just judge ourselves against theirs, but I want to see our history, if you don't mind, like past 10 years. A lot of it should be already out there. Cool, thank you.
All right, and then next is the investment analysis for August. So we received $492,931 in interest, which puts us at a little over 4.6 million since September of last year. Any questions on that?
All right, next is the financial management software.
So I am making a recommendation that we award the bid for the financial management software to Tyler Technologies in the amount of $482,100 for professional implementation and $206,120 for SaaS services for years 1 through 3.
Any questions? Mr. Blackaby, a change order.
This is a change order for Golden Isles Elementary Phase 2. Before he closed out Phase 1, this will work us towards closing out Phase 2, and then the change order is a negative change order, so it's actually a credit back to us for $52,104. The actual change order is there, but anyway, we'll credit the, it'll credit that amount back to us as unspent funds.
All right, any questions for Mr. Blackaby? All right, Mr. Benson, SAT scores.
Good evening. Newly released data from the Georgia Department of Education shows that students in Glen County for our class of 2023 certainly exceeded expectations and beat both the state and national averages. If you're looking at the slide in front of you here, you see Glen County in the middle, and then followed by the state and national scores. For us, from our 2022 cohort to our 2023 cohort, you see that red bar there at 1,073. That score also placed us with an overall mean average first in our RISA, so that's certainly something to celebrate. If you're looking at the, both the math and the ELA reading and writing scores, you see a couple of things. Our district score remains the same at 518 from the previous year. While I think it's important to note, both scores decreased in the state and national averages, we were able to maintain our scores. In terms of reading and writing, you see an increase in Glen County, while you see a decrease both in the state and national averages, so that's also something I think that's important to note. Both high schools are listed on the first two graphs. In terms of the number of test takers, Glen County actually had a few less students taking the test in regards to the class of 2023. We placed fourth in the RISA for the number of students taking it. We actually had 357 test takers, in the previous year, we had 347 students. Here's the, I think, the point of celebration, though. When you look at the overall mean score, you see that we're first in our RISA with our composite score of 1,073. The red line indicates the state average.
We don't have all our students take the SAT, right?
That is correct.
That is correct. I think it's important to note, though, that when you look at this data, this is for all public school students. This data does not include private students, but it is an equal comparison across all school divisions.
The Scrivin', Bryan Bullock, and Wayne County, are they mandatory?
I don't think anybody's mandatory that everybody takes the SAT. Now, we do mandate that everybody takes the PSAT, I think, in the 10th grade.
You'll also notice that McIntosh is missing from the list. When you, when you're a school district and you have less than 15 students take the exam, then you're also not included. So if you happen to see that, that's the reason for that as well. When you look at the categories, you can see why our overall mean score is number one, because when you look at our categories, sections, cohorts, reading and writing, we're first in the RISA. So you see us right there at the top. Again, the red line indicates the state of Georgia. We actually placed fourth in the RISA for math. With our score of 518, we do exceed the state average by just seven, seven points.
So I know Mr. Madala brought up a point, are they required to take the SAT? And they're not, but ACT is an option too, and I'm wondering if we're seeing this data for math, because I've heard and my children have done better on the ACT, and I think a lot of math, science-type students tend to go towards the ACT instead of SAT. So I don't know if there'd ever be a way to look at equivalent scores and kind of make a pool of the two, but I just wonder if maybe that's why we appear to be lower in the math section for the SAT. Does that make sense based on what you?
Yeah, we'll certainly take a look at some data and see if we can.
Yeah, the ACT, they'll, they'll give us our scores, they'll give us the state scores and national scores, but I don't think they break it down like this. They don't break it down quite as much as the SAT does. That's why the SAT is, probably more people take it. But yeah, you're right about that, because of the subject level content.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. All right, we're going to go, we're going to go next to Dr. Salmon with the Google report. Dr. Salmon, you're on.
Thanks, Simon. I'll be there briefly. You have a copy of the summer report in front of you, and I just mentioned two or three things regarding the report. If you look at page 1, the one with all the various colors, you'll see most of the colors now are blue. You've got two more of those projects that will turn blue in a month or two, depending on closeout for those, so that is going well. As we look over at page 2, you will see the ones that are enclosed out over there highlighted with the purple, the Eggmont Parking, as well as the Ogilvy Gym, and the Center for Performing Arts, plus a million dollars if you still have at the Glen Building, or really all you still have left there. So you're in good shape. I would call your attention to probably page 4 next. As we look at that, you will see that 2.848 million for your receipts this month. That has a little more relevance if you look at page 5. It's the first month that we've had this, that's about a $900,000 drop from last month. And you can see how that has gone. Let's look at the next page, page 6, and you'll see the parallel between the blue line, which is this month last year, the red line that is this year. You've been generally $200,000 to $500,000 more. This is the first time in a long time that your receipts this month, if you look over on the far right, are just a little less, about actually $40,000 less than they were this month last year. But Mike and I have discussed this, we discussed it a little yesterday in some of our meetings, and we've looked at most of the systems up and down the coast, everybody's in the same situation. For some reason, this month, everybody is down compared to what they were last month. But you're still in very good shape, you know, we've been carrying a $2 million budget, and you're averaging like $2,779 a month. So you're still in very good shape, and we'll be able now, I'll go over to, let's go over to page 9. One more thing that I'd like you to see is you look at your receipts, and Mike's going to talk about the project, let's go over to 9. We are at this point in collections at 85 million, which you will see on page 9 up in that light green area. You're at 76% of your collections. If that number, the 2.83 million, holds true, you're going to get your 112 million by probably March or so of next year. So for your 60-month vote, you're going to make it in about 40 months. So you're doing well on collections. One other thing, you saw it on Avery's sheet a while ago, with interest rates what they are, you are now averaging between 3 and 4, SPOS 3 and SPOS 4, about $250,000 a month, just in interest receipts, about 175 on 4, and then about $80,000 a month on 3. So you're in, you're in good shape, you're going to collect thoroughly, and everything's going well, the projects are on schedule. You have some delivery issues, you will continue to have some delivery issues. And I asked Scott to let me speak instead of Mike tonight, because I wanted to thank y'all. Mentioned again with the staff yesterday, we, I've been working since 1956, and we've decided that's about long enough. So come January, I'm going to, as we used to say on our merch, if any of you know what that is, I'm going to head to the barn. We will be through, I'll continue to work, do your reports through January. And of course, you've seen Tony before, between he and Mike and Sam, they've been expecting that I would either die or kill a little life for a year. So we've been training other people to take over this, you know. A couple of years ago, I almost got the first one, but I'm still here. But we are, we've had people in training to take care of this, so you will not be in alert, Sam will not be in alert when I do, it's a barn of war, whichever one it is. So we just wanted to let you know, and I wanted to thank y'all. Not many people have an opportunity to have the most exciting, and I think best time of their career at the end of it, which I think I've had this last 16 years that we've been here, has been one of the most fun parts of my 65-year career, whatever it is. So I can keep the math, you know. And I've also decided on, like some of our friends in Washington, when I think it's time to go away, I'm going to go away. I have enough deer in the headlights smoking just from my hearing. So anyway, I want to thank y'all for giving us this opportunity, for giving me this opportunity, and it's been a pleasure to work with y'all during this time, you, your predecessors, the staff and their predecessors, and I think we have been a small part of giving y'all, being a part of these four very successful SPOS programs, so I just wanted to say that personally. And thank y'all, and may not, may not see you again, but I will be thinking about you, so I just wanted to say goodbye.
Well, thank you very much. We certainly appreciate it.
We appreciate you too, you know that, right?
Very much, Simon. We very appreciate it.
Mr. Blackaby, if you could, with the facilities update, please.
So I'll just run through, you know, kind of where we stand on some of the projects right now. As far as East SPOS 3 goes, the, we're essentially complete at the gym and the Eggmont Street Parking, except for punch list items, that, you know, just have to kind of wrap up there, so we'll, we'll be hopefully closing those out in the coming month, and we can get, get those off of the books. The only remaining work that we currently have going on in East SPOS 3 is the Glen Academy Building chiller replacement, which gets loaded on the truck to carry over there in the morning, so we can get it, get it replaced while students are not there. We'll do that, do that tomorrow, and Monday we'll get that replaced. And then also, starting tomorrow, there's a small piece of retention wall that needs to be installed next to the annex building to divert some water into a drain box, so we can not have any more foundation issues there. And we had all the supplies delivered for that today, so we'll, we'll get that done tomorrow. And that will wrap up the primary work we have going on in East SPOS 3 right now. As far as the performing arts, which is also on East SPOS 3, just to give you a quick update as to where we stand with that, we're expecting to have a design review ready by late December, and then with anticipation of being able to potentially start construction as, as early as late May, or excuse me, late April, early May, depending things. They're working, trying to identify some long lead items and things such as that, to see what needs to be procured early to start construction after the design is complete. And the target date, what's penciled in right now for completion would be late September, early October of 2025. Kind of some dates that have been worked through with the, with the design and the construction team is to the calendar going forward with performing arts. With East SPOS 4, Needwood and Overthorpe Point, and then we're nearing completion on those. With East Plus Four, Needwood and Overthorpe Point, and we're nearing completion on those. Needwood, we still have to get the serving line for the new, for the renovated cafeteria. We do not have a firm delivery date for that yet, but it's supposed to come in October. So we're hoping it gets here in the next couple of weeks. And at Overthorpe Point, we have a couple of doors that need to be installed. Again, they were items that just were delayed in shipping. We have the doors, we just don't have the hardware yet now, so now we're waiting on the hardware. But as soon as we finish those, those two items will be done with those projects. At Satilla Marsh, we have laid the foundations out for the classroom additions this week and began installing the underslab sewer. So we're moving along with those pretty well. At St. Simon's, the construction of the kitchen, the gym and the admin area is the primary focus there. The kitchen is nearing completion. We hope to move into the kitchen by the end of October. Equipment is scheduled to begin arriving early next week so we can start installing the appliances. I believe the new cafeteria furniture is arriving Tuesday, and we'll already have that in place into the cafeteria for beginning next week. Again, we hope to move into the kitchen by the end of October. And then the admin area will be, it'll fall soon behind that with a November-December timeframe. We're held up waiting on at least one air conditioner unit still before we can move forward with that. And then the gym will be further on into the spring before we're able to make that move. And then we have a chiller replacement at Jane Make and Anglin Middle. We do have the chillers, they are on site, but we can't shut the air conditioning off in the buildings right now. So we're going to put those on hold and we're going to do them over Thanksgiving and install the chillers at both of those locations. And then as far as New Glendale Elementary, the planning for that goes, we are in the early design phase, still waiting on the final site approval from the DOE. We do have the site surveys complete, so again, we're moving along with that. We're hoping to be able to start doing some early site work there in late spring.
Any questions for Mr. Blackaby? Let's see, Mr. Benson with the GICCA electric vehicle grant.
Certainly an exciting time at GICCA right now. If you've been paying attention, we are literally on a roll in terms of grants. This week, we received notification that our Georgia Department of Education competitive grant for $150,000 was approved for the staff out at GICCA to purchase two switch electric vehicles. These vehicles are designed so that students can assemble and test and then disassemble throughout the course of a semester. There are actually 16 workstations at each vehicle, so that means there can be 16 students working. The amount for this competitive grant was $150,000, which we are asking this evening to be able to purchase two of these electric switch vehicles. There were 16 school divisions that were awarded these grants in the state of Georgia, and Glenn County is one of those 16. So we're certainly proud of that fact.
Dr. Deppenhardt is doing quite the job of writing these grants, and I know that he couldn't be here tonight, but he's doing quite the job. And Brian Weiss is also there helping too.
Hey, this is, in the paper, I guess, kind of spoiled it for us because they put a story in a couple of days ago. But, I mean, this is so timely for our area and for our, you know, kids that are looking for careers right away and Bryan County having the Hyundai facility coming in and suppliers needing to be in our area. So I applaud everybody's efforts for being proactive, getting something like this going so we can have students, you know, ready when things start cranking in that type of industry around here. So, thank you all.
We are hoping to incorporate the technology into our engineering program. And as you stated, with the vicinity of Hyundai plant in Bryan County, it certainly will be a pipeline for our students to be able to go right out into industry and obtain a job. So that's, it's really exciting for them.
You visited the construction site the other day. You want to talk a little bit about that?
So this is the second, if you're keeping track, this is the second grant that Dr. Deppenhardt and GICCA has been able to obtain. The first grant was the Heavy Equipment Operators Grant, which purchased the four simulators. And as Dr. Spence referenced, they had the opportunity to go out and watch their capstone project yesterday. And what I saw were students that were prepared and ready to step on actual cat equipment and perform the duties and be able to, you know, use the joystick, so to speak, to fill the dump truck. They also have an understanding of what that equipment needs to be, what type of shape that equipment needs to be in so that they're working in a safe environment. And as I talked to the industry professionals there on the site, you know, I simply asked, would you hire? And they said, we'd hire every single one of them. And then we went on to say, okay, in terms of a starting salary, $60,000 to $70,000 was the amount. If students are willing to work, they can achieve another $20,000 in terms of overtime. So if you're keeping track, you know, that's a student, that's an 18 or 19-year-old that can go to a job and make $90,000 here in Glenn County and not incur any college debt.
Sure, and includes benefits?
That does include benefits. I shared with Dr. Spence, you know, these individuals, their employees actually are paid one hour to be, they're paid while they drive to work. And they do receive a company truck as well, and that company truck can be used for personal reasons as well on the weekends. So that's a pretty sweet deal if you're keeping track.
Seaside might need to do that. So any other questions for Mr. Benson?
No, I think I was fortunate enough to go out yesterday as well and watch the students operate. And the simulators are a huge, huge bonus for us, and they understood that as well. To be able to, you know, sit on a million-dollar piece of equipment and be able to, you know, start it up and go ahead and start operating it without anyone in there, they were pretty nervous, but they were also prepared. And they were pretty excited as well. Also, I think the key, Ms. Sam said only just a second ago, as I was talking to the industry folks there, we need to, as a school system and as a county, be more proactive instead of reactive as to what's coming and what's needed. And this is going to help us do that, especially with this new grant. You guys have been fortunate enough to, or we've been fortunate enough for you guys to go out and get for us. But it will prepare the kids for what is coming rather than us being behind the eight ball and trying to catch to what is needed. So they're excited about that as well. And they actually brought a whole nother busload of students that were in the intro class out to watch the guys that were in the advanced class operate the equipment. And I think that's key too for us to have the counselors and those folks to have these kids, you know, I guess intrigue their curiosity as to what's out there. And of course, they all want to know the number, you know, when am I going to get paid? You know, that type of stuff, which is obviously pretty motivating in itself. But I think it's the work ethic that we've got to instill in the kids because, you know, it's not, it's not an air conditioning job, it's not a computer job, but it is very, very, you know, rewarding pay-wise, not to mention the future aspect of what you can do in those type of industries. So I was excited to see that many folks out there, that many kids, students, you know, participating, not only participating, but just looking on and being able to see what is available to them. So hopefully we can continue down that track. I was amazed that they said each one of these vehicles are, you know, close to $75,000, $80,000. And basically, we can put them together or take them apart, put them back together the next, you know, semester and whatnot. So that's pretty neat too as far as the robotics aspect of it. So I think, again, if we can get ahead of the curve and have these kids ready, then that would definitely help the industry as it comes to this part of the area.
The life expectancy on the vehicles is 10 years.
Right, that's what they were saying.
And so they do ship some replacement parts as well. And Dr. Deppenhardt and I have been looking, many of the materials that you need for these vehicles are available at your local automotive stores as well. So we're very confident that we're going to be able to.
Well, definitely kudos to Mr. Deppenhardt and his staff because they have really done a great job in the last two years of putting all these things together. I'd like to also thank, and we can review this again Tuesday, but what to thank we need to as far as the public. But for Seboard Construction, you know, to, when Mr. Kicklader, the president, called me two years ago about, you know, how could we do something or whatnot, he already had all this stuff kind of worked out. And for him to actually step forward, you know, is a big thing for the community, and I'm excited that they're actually going to be able to reap some benefits from it from our students. So hopefully other people will, you know, take heed to that and maybe move towards helping us out as well as far as getting these programs started and actually seeing them through. We have a lot of people talk about it, but nobody does anything. But Seboard was willing to stand behind it, not only stand behind it, but go out to the actual manufacturers and get them. But they actually brought the equipment earlier this week, and they pulled the plastic off the seat. I mean, it was brand new, come right off the factory showroom. And to have that type of stuff brought to the school system for those kids to use, you know, it was just pretty amazing. So anyways, exciting time, and I appreciate you guys putting that together. And again, thanks to Seboard and Mr. Deppenhardt for all the hard work that they've done and his staff. They were out there as well, and I think they were pretty excited to see the kids actually being able to touch it and feel it and see what they were doing in the classroom, actually out in the field. So it was pretty exciting.
Seboard also invited some individuals from Scruggs.
Yes, sir.
Located down in Waycross, because he wanted those individuals to see what we were doing here in Glenn County. And Scruggs mentioned they want to go back to the lounge and say, this is what you guys need to be doing.
Right. Well, Mr. Kicklader, you know, he was, he's very, I guess, forward in the advertising aspect of getting, he's not only worried about Glenn County, but he's, you know, trying to get other folks involved, like you said, with Scruggs and that type of thing, so other counties can actually do the same thing. So it's nice to have, you know, when we built GICCA, it was pretty much the state eye for folks to come down and model after, and it's good to have our programs doing the same thing. So thank you guys for doing all that.
Thank you, Mr. Benson. So the last thing I have is pay for our non-exempt hourly. Oh, I missed Terry. Terry, yep. Sorry, I didn't check her off. So Terry's going to talk about MAP Assessment.
So for the past three years, this is our third year of our current implementation using the NWEA MAP Assessment System. And basically, it says assessment system, but it is really so much more than just an assessment system. It does benchmark our kids' force three times a year, but it also provides evidence to help the teachers plan for small groups, which is what we're pushing for so we can meet individual needs of kids, whether it's remediation or acceleration. It targets each kid's strengths and each kid's areas of concern so that teachers can really target in on what skills they need to teach when they're teaching and planning their lessons. By purchasing this and committing to a three-year agreement, we're actually going to save $35,000 a year if we purchase by next Wednesday, actually. They gave me an extension so we could get it on this board report. So by next Wednesday, if we purchase it and guarantee three years, we will save $35,000 a year by doing that. Along with the MAP Assessment System, we also have MAP Accelerator, which is another piece that helps us accelerate in our math courses, and that's grades three through eight that's available for that. And it also includes a dyslexia screener. And I don't know if you are familiar, but Senate Bill 48 will go into effect next fall. And so as a district, we have to have a dyslexia screener because every kid in first through third grade will be screened for dyslexia. And so that, this would keep us from having to go purchase something else to do the dyslexia screener because it's already built in. We're actually going to pilot the dyslexia screener at a couple of our elementary schools in December to kind of get our feet wet with it and see exactly what we need to do to perfect it for next fall. So that would keep us from having to purchase something extra as well. The MAP Assessment System is used in grades kindergarten all the way through 10th grade. And in high school, the ninth and 10th graders, it's used for tested subject areas. So it allows us to kind of predict and see growth of students throughout the whole year so that we can kind of predict how they will perform on the end-of-year assessments or end-of-course assessments in high school. So that total cost of $568,800 includes professional learning, it includes the three years' worth of data integration as well as interpretation and just fostering a culture of growth among our teachers. Our teachers have been very receptive to MAP and its usage in the classrooms.
Any questions?
I do, I have two questions. One is in regard to the contract here. So it says the subscription period starts July 1st.
It's because we've paid.
Through, correct, yeah.
We've paid up through this year with ESER funds. We were able to pay up through this year, but we're no longer going to use ESER funds after September 30th. So in order to get this, we'd have to be moved to general fund.
Right, and it makes it look like we're not going to be invoiced until the subscription date? Is that the way you understand it? So are we just locking in a price with this?
Locking in a price and signing the contract, yes.
Okay, okay. But not actually having to pay yet. And then my next question relates to MAP itself. Are the grades that, I don't really know how this works, but whatever score they get on the assessments, are those part of their grade for the class?
No.
They're strictly just used for.
Formative assessment, yeah.
Planning purposes for the kids.
Yes, ma'am.
Finding out what levels they are and maybe where they need reinforcement.
Correct. It's just informs instruction. It's a formative assessment to guide the lesson planning for the teachers.
Yes, thank you.
Anything, any other question?
All right, then finally, I want to recommend that we pay a pay raise for our non-exempt hourly employees. And so I'm asking that all non-exempt hourly employees receive a $2 raise per hour. This will include substitutes. I want to be very clear on this where everybody hears it because every time we do something with pay, people want to make sure if they're included or not. So this will include all substitutes. It will not include food service because they have already had their pay adjusted by the food service department, and it will not include campus monitors because they have already received a $2 pay raise earlier in the year. And so we will continue the attendance stipend until, for those who are eligible, such as bus drivers and substitutes, we will continue the attendance stipend that we have been given until July 4th of 2020, July 1st of 2024. And then we will stop that because they're getting the $2 per hour raise. So the funding source will come in two places. First, it will come out of ESER, where we use the remaining part of our ESER Cares Act for the remainder of this year. And then when we get to the new budget, we will add that to the budget, and it's approximately $3.4 million per year. Any questions?
Can you just give us a general rundown of some of the departments that are impacted?
Everybody except for, it would be.
SROs.
SROs, every hourly employee.
Gotcha.
Custodians.
Clerical.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, bus drivers, bus aides.
That would be the next question.
Substitute teachers, parapros.
Air professional, yeah. No teachers, teachers aren't included.
Substitute custodians, everyone except for, it's every hourly employee that we hire except for the campus monitors and the cafeteria workers. Because they have already received, they've already received. And we will continue the attendance stipends until July of 2024 that we've been doing. Did I miss anything when I said that? Because we wrote this down very carefully. Any other questions? That is all I have.
All right. So I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session for personnel, legal, and land. So moved. Motion by Ms. Given.
Take it.
Taken by Mr. Mansell. All in favor of entering into executive session? Sheen Manus.
Actually, when does that take effect?
At the end of this month, I want that to be on their paycheck.
So their next check.
There's one thing, I thought I missed something. It is for the primary job code only. And so we have people who have a primary job code, and then they have a secondary job code. For instance, those people who work in after-school programs, so it would only be for their primary job code. It would not be, because basically, the after-school program decides their pay, or Title I might decide their pay. So we're not, we don't have any impact on that. So it'd be for their primary job only.
What about, what about overtime rates for like SROs, for instance?
No, time would be, would be an extra time and a half.
I'm just making sure. That's clear.
Right.
They're making $20. If they're making $20 an hour and they go to 22, is there a time and a half based on the 22 right now to 20?
Right. It's, it's based off the 22.
Okay, I got you.
It's based off their salary.
That sounds right.
Now, what I'm saying is some, some.
I know, I know what you mean. I'm just clarifying.
I just wanted to say that because that's.
That'd be a question.
And we probably, we probably missed something and there'll be other questions too.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
But that's okay. We'll get them.
Okay. So at 5:41, we've approved to go into executive session.
The first step is to identify the target area and then identify the location of the target. This will help us to identify the target area and identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area. Then, we need to identify the location of the target. We will use the following tools to do this. First, we need to identify the target area.
To regular session.
Motion.
Second.